Before you all go home, our newly elected president has a message for the audience. So if you all can please take your seats for a little bit. Thank you.
Hey guys, I would just like to announce these beautiful baskets that are up here. The three beautiful baskets, they're not yours. But what we're gonna do, Mr. Alameia, Ms. Gonzalez and I talked and we're gonna give those baskets out to the three top elementaries that are gonna be, have the largest attendance. So I want to thank the boards for doing that. Thank you very much. Enjoy yourselves, guys.
And following right along, if everyone, if we could have your attention, please. Thank you. In following Mr. Farias' message, I would like also to say good evening to everyone. And first, I'd like to thank God, my sons and my family, and thank you to all who reached out to me this week with positive messages, encouragement and blessings this past week. As we all together go into this amazing educational journey, I'd like to especially thank teachers, past, present and future teachers. One of the first lessons we were all taught by our wonderful teachers and each and every one of us in this room here has had a wonderful teacher was the lesson of taking turns. And by taking turns and sharing, we start to work as a team with respect, dignity and integrity. Let us all thank a teacher today and every day for the valuable lessons that they teach us. Thank you. And on a personal note, for all the fashionistas out there, I am wearing white today in honor of women's suffrage and the 19th amendment of August 18, 1920 that gave us women the right to vote. To show girls, young women and women everywhere, that you too may have a seat at the table, at an office, in a classroom, in a boardroom and even in the White House. To make decisions, to dream and to determine your destiny and to always, as all of us at ECISD have always done, to do what's right for girls and boys. Keep your crowns, ladies. Thank you, Mr. President.
So this is Letty? This is Letty and then Dominga. He's a better son. So this is correct?
I know, I'm gonna get my stuff. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Who's sitting here?
Good night.
Good luck, Mike. Great, sir. Dr. Moreno will be ready? Everybody? Okay, very good. Where's Domingo? Okay.
When you call Ro, I don't know if Javier is on or not.
We went through here, I think. What did everybody's got?
No, you're good, you're good, man. You're good.
Is Javi out there? Javier? Okay, yes. Okay, good. There she comes. Mr.? That's Ro. Start her video. Very good. There she is. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is November 17, 2020. I'll go ahead and conduct roll call. To my right, Honorable Oscar Salinas, Honorable Carmen Gonzalez, the Honorable Domingo Vela, our interim superintendent, Mr. Garza, myself, Miguel Mike Farias, Letty Garcia, Honorable Letty Garcia, Honorable Louis Alameia and our legal counsel, Mr. O'Handlon. And this establishes a court. Now number two, prayer and pledge. Ms. Gonzalez?
Heavenly Father, ask you the blessings on this board as we meet to consider and make decisions that are important to the administration of our school district. Help us to distinguish the good from the bad, the safe from the unsafe, the significant from the insignificant. May the results of our deliberations be worthy of our sake. This is what I ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. Our pledge leads to be Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Item number three, certification of public notice.
Yes, Mr. President, I do certify that the agenda was posted as required by the Texas Open Meeting Act.
Excellent. Thank you very much, sir. Number four, do we have any awards or recognitions?
Not at this time, sir.
Very good. Number five, superintendent report. Mr. Garza?
Yes, sir. You have before you the district membership comparison from last year to this year and by school, by grade, by campus. And if you look at the very bottom for the grand totals, you will see that last year to this day, we had 34,344 students and this year we have 32,849. So we're under 1,495 students from last year.
Very good, sir. Did you have another report as far as in campus or are you gonna do a presentation on?
Well, it's not in the agenda, but we can do that. We have it with us and...
Or sir, is there another time you would like to discuss that?
No, no, we can do it now. We can do it now. If you can go get him for me.
Of course. Just to let you all know is I requested this information so we could know how many students and how many staff we have in our schools right now attending. We get a better understanding as far as the percentage of students and the percentage of staff that we have in our 42 different schools. Thank you, Mr. Garza.
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Javier is asking for you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Salinas?
For the record, I am here.
Okay, thank you, sir. And for the record, Mr. Salinas is here. Mr. Javier, Honorable Javier Salinas is here.
I do have a question on enrollment, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I know that TEA is using a home harness, forming up for the first 18 weeks. And the home harness will be based on the amount of face-to-face kids we have who are possibly gonna lose some money because we don't have the percentages to be there. But my question is to Dr. Morrison, have you already done an adjustment on those kids that are not here with us this year? And are you gonna bring that budget amendment to the board at the next board meeting to make an adjustment on the budget? Because the budget will move down with the God for those kids that are not here.
No, sir, we have not done the calculation because this is the very first week of the third reporting period. And in speaking to TEA last week, they told us we did not have to submit the waiver until the end of the year. He said it might be a little presumptuous of us to do that now because TEA may have a change of heart and allow districts to have that hold harmless longer than the period reported. That was what they shared with us. But we have not made any adjustments. Our mid-year budget amendment is going to be in January, the first meeting in January. We will monitor it and we will report to the board the difference in ADA.
Okay, my second question is Dr. Morrison or Mr. Garza on enrollment is I know that TEA is asking for a specific future calculation of enrollment and it's gonna be real difficult for you and for every district due to the fact that you don't know if kids will come back or where they're at. But in this calculation, we have to be real careful because it's gonna affect the first report. And I know that ECISD over the last, I think, 16 years has had a perfect score. How are you tackling the enrollment calculation prediction for what TEA required? Because it's a monster of a guess that we have to be within percentages of that you'll be stopped points on the first report. So have you come up with a strategy for that yet?
That's Eddie.
Dr. Moreno?
Yes, sir. We have been monitoring our attendance regardless of the circumstances. TEA did provide us with new data elements and codes to submit and we have been monitoring extensively and making sure that we are reporting all the students that are on campus and receiving that on-campus instruction.
To what? There's a TA report this week and the TA report is on student enrollment. And it's asking for a prediction of what you think you're gonna have in the next two years. And that prediction is that within a small little window of error, it's gonna cost us a lot of points on the first report. So have we come up with a little strategy or formula that you're gonna use to predict the future? Which we can't predict today because I know that every district is in the same dilemma. But have you also thought of a strategy of what number you're gonna put in your own report? So does it beat them in the first report?
And that report, sir, is due, I think, the second week of December. That is one of the reports that we are working on through our PMS department. And we have a long history of our enrollment predictions on a yearly basis that we can use and establish a percent index of the increase that we're gonna utilize to be able to apply the projection for the next year, the next year or two. I think like every other district in the state, we're gonna be reaching out to our neighbors to determine the index that's going to be used by everyone and adjust accordingly. Our PMS department is working with Region One to get feedback from them as well to see what percent increase or the index that's gonna be utilized to be able to determine those projections. And we'll probably be getting some general feedback from Region One as well, just like you are, sir.
TEA, this email is all letting you know that they got a formula that you can look at.
Mm-hmm.
So if you all look at that email, I think it'd be a good guide.
Yes, sir.
Like you said, every Region One, six, seven minutes. And I just don't wanna get deep. You know, having that perfect hundred for 16 years in a row, maybe even more, I like to keep that hundred. And it's gonna be real hard to predict the percentage, especially with COVID at this time.
Thank you, sir. We'll take that into consideration. We appreciate your feedback.
Sure. Yes, Mr. Garza, could you please walk us through that? Thank you.
The Edinburgh CIST has provided for you in the handout that we just gave you, the students and staff on campus for the three instructional days, November 12, Thursday. We did not include Friday because Friday was an asynchronous day, the first handout. And then we have yesterday, Monday, we have the report for November the 16th. And you also have before you the report for today, November the 17th, 2020. And I'm just gonna walk you through the first date, which was Thursday of last week. Where you have on your left, you have all the campuses, of course. You have the elementaries in the front page and then you have the middle and high schools. In the second page, the number that you are referring to, Mr. Farias, President Farias, is highlighted in green as far as all the teachers on campus and teachers also on campus volunteering to do in-person instruction, the second column. So that's the comparison you were asking for. That's what we had the first day on a Thursday. And then you can see the numbers that tell us at the very bottom on the second page, we had 439 teachers on campus and 79 teachers doing in-person. That's for Thursday. And then you can see the difference from Thursday to Monday. You have again the green highlight, all teachers on campus. And then on the second column, you have the all teachers volunteering for in-person instruction. And the grand total is quite different. You have all teachers on campus. A total, grand total is 800, I'm sorry, 688 and 220 teachers were doing volunteer in-person instruction. And you have the breakdown by elementary, 421. On campus, 157 doing in-person instruction. The middle school, 123 present and 54 doing in-person instruction. Total at the high school, 144, nine teachers doing in total instruction, in person-to-person instruction. That's for Monday. And today being, of course, Tuesday, the last handout that you have before you. Again, you have it by campus. And you can see us and campuses have some big numbers and others don't have any at all. Depending on the students that they have, they were... But we gave the teachers that choice. So on November the 17th, today, the elementary total is 408 on campus and 157 providing in-person instruction. At the middle school, we have 123 teachers on campus, 53 providing in-person instruction. At the high school, we had 122, 10 providing on-campus instruction. That's for the teachers on campus. And the students are, if you can check... And, uh, the students are, if you can check the number for the students that are on, on campus, you can also just go to the first, uh, pay, first day and, and compare the progression from Thursday last week to Monday, yesterday, and Tuesday also. If you want to, I can, but if you have any questions on the number of teachers that are currently attending, those are the figures that we have generated as of today.
Very good. I, I just wanted to get a, um, a snapshot of how many students we actually have attending our schools. And as you stated, it does vary, especially in the elementary level.
Yes.
It does vary quite a bit. But, uh, the, we went ahead and there's a thousand seven hundred and ten students as of today that attended in the schools. And out of a thirty-two thousand individuals, I would imagine that's about six percent of the students. Is that adequate or is that accurate as far as a percentage of the total students?
For the first day?
Uh, for today, for the seventeenth. Yeah, what's, it's about six percent. So we were looking at, our surveys were saying that it was going to be twenty-four to twenty-five percent. So I'm just pointing out that even though the surveys, uh, went ahead and made a statement of the percentage, the actual, uh, physical individuals that are showing up is at a six percent. And then our teachers are at about twenty-five percent. So, um, and I know that, that some of them do vary. We just need to make sure that, that whatever students are in face-to-face in school, that they are taken care of and that they're kept, uh, safe. And the only reason I ask for this is so the public can know what's really going on in our school districts as far as attendance physically in our classrooms. So, Mr. Garza, thank you very much.
Mr. President, if I may, uh, Ms. Usman and Mr. Garza. So why do we have so many, um, elementary students on campus? And if we look at the secondary numbers, they are so low. I mean, we're looking at end-of, end-of course, retesters, graduation. All our elementaries are, are high, high number. And our secondary and especially the high schools, the numbers are extremely low.
You are correct.
What, what is the explanation or the reason for that? Knowing that we're going to test in December, knowing we have end-of course, and knowing that we're going to get calls as a board on, if we have graduation June second, we're going to get calls on June first that why didn't my son, why isn't my son or daughter walking across the stage? So what's the answer?
Um, all the students that are on the waiver list that qualify to come in have been, all been invited to come to school. Several of the phone calls, we've been calling to confirm. Those that said yes, many have changed their minds, um, due to either the numbers and the, the cases that are going up. Some of them asking if the teachers are on campus, and that is a big deciding factor for some parents. Those are the two things that, that have come up as questions that have come up from, um, from some of the parents and some of the, the explanations that we've gotten from the principals.
Because those numbers are, especially at the high schools, are extremely low.
Yes, and, but they are making calls daily to invite students to come to campus. The state has recently given us direction on inviting students who are possibly failing or due to attendance issues. There's a procedure that we need to put in place, uh, that we can require some students to come. So we are looking at those numbers and looking at those students so that we can see who else we can bring in and how we can bring them in to provide instruction.
So hopefully on November thirtieth, when, when all staff is back and parents see that our staff is, is back, they might begin to send the students back to school. But again, as you're saying, depending on the cases and how many teachers will be present when all return on November thirtieth, correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Salinas, go ahead.
I know that you need an experience with parents. And, and one of the things, you know, I do have a threat of being superintendent across the region. And everybody's voice is the same thing as us tonight. Majority of the parents have changed their minds. They see the news of one guy until closed down, their country also closed down. A lot of schools are closed down already because kids are coming to school positive. So I, 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 I saw the numbers and I knew that, you know, the parents hold all the cards. If the parents feel that it's safe to send their kids to school, they will. But the majority of the parents are abstaining. I, I, I mean, ninety is a solid number to me, at least ninety percent of the parents said yes, they have changed their mind because they just don't feel that the numbers that are out there today, the number was four hundred and thirty-two. I talked to Dr. Melendez, he says multiply more than thirty-two times seven. And that's the real number of applications in the El Alco County today. That'd be twenty-five hundred people today. So with those numbers, the parents are not going to send their kids to school no matter what we do. But we can always try, like I said, keep trying and calling the parents. But they hold all the cards and they're changing their minds all over Region One. They don't want their kids to score right now. And I hope they.
I'm in agreement with that. I don't blame them. The numbers are going up.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Salinas. Does that include the superintendent's report?
Yes, sir, it does.
Thank you very much. Now to go to, um, item number six, public comment.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, we do have one, Melissa DeLeon, and the topic is COVID teacher, COVID nineteen teacher return.
Very good. Thank you.
Romeo, are you in the room?
Thank you, interim, uh, Garza and school board members for allowing me the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Melissa DeLeon and I am an educator here at ECISD. As a member of the professional staff of this district, I am here before you under the most urgent of matters. Up until late July, El Alco County garnered national attention for becoming a COVID nineteen hotspot overnight. The nation witnessed the frailty of our medical infrastructure and the devastation of our community caused by the influx of positive cases we did not see coming. The reality is that the dangers of COVID nineteen are still very real today. With holidays approaching and families gathering, we are sure to see ourselves on the brink of another outbreak. And it is because of this urgent matter that I question the motives and would like to know why ECISD, its board members, and its interim superintendent have stopped using preventative measures to prevent us from staying at home safely. Why have preventative measures such as remote instruction been removed from educators, forcing us to onsite instruction effective November thirtieth? Why are we being asked to rush back to in-person instruction? Why have our students been allowed to take such risks by the very people that have protected them from Han before? Why is COVID nineteen, this airborne deadly virus that lurks among us, not being taken more seriously by our leadership? What is the pressing need for teachers to be on campus to perform the very same duties that we have been executing effectively from home? I would like the parameters of our school board members and our interim superintendent that they are using as a driving force to go against the will of seventy percent of its professional and paraprofessional staff and community, communities. Are these motives greater than my life? Are they greater than the life of my colleagues? And I ask you, are these motives greater than the life of a child? Are we that expendable? Even as I stand here before you today, I am in this empty room to speak to you remotely. For you yourselves have secluded yourself from the public. If you cannot face us, why should we, why should you hold the decision to obligate us to face our students, to welcome any pathogen or virus that they may be carrying? The fact is that we should have had a seat at the table. We as educators should have had an opportunity to voice these concerns freely, waiting for the opportunity to voice our concerns publicly and privately. We hear and we see countless families share their loss of COVID nineteen. We see the families mass where they have multiple positive cases in their families. We see them grieve. We see the devastation that they currently live and that they face day to day. We are at the forefront of what they are enduring. And we know the struggles that our community and our children are facing, especially those children on the east side of Edinburgh, which I passionately dedicate my life and educational work to. These are the very children that you are welcoming back. Many families are still exposed. And I would hate to see their eyes when they, at one point or another, facing inevitable, inevitable fact that they may have infected their teacher. My campus has also faced a lot of devastation with over eight positive cases from my administration down to our cafeteria workers. One, one person has unfortunately passed due to the complication of the virus, and another is still fighting the virus at this moment. We would like to be heard. We would like to remain safe at home. We would like to be protected. We would like for a TA waiver to include us and to let us to continue to work remotely. Would like the choice to remain alive, protect ECISD teachers and faculty from COVID nineteen, allow teachers a choice to continue productivity of a virtual instruction for the safety of their home until a vaccine is readily available to the general public. If PHA can keep its teachers and its students safe at home, ECISD should be able to do the same. Thank you for your attention and good evening.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Garza. Now for item number seven, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to consolidate seven A through seven W?
So move.
Second.
Okay, um, discussion?
Yes, uh, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a discussion. I would like to pull for discussion, item W, please.
Okay, seven W will be pulled for discussion. Any other items need to be pulled for discussion? Are we okay with that?
Which one did?
Seven W.
Okay.
Ms. Ella asked to pull seven W?
For discussion?
Yes. So, um, I'd like to make the motion to go ahead and consolidate seven A through seven, um, I was going to say seven W, but let's pull out seven W, to seven B. And we're going to pull out seven W for discussion. Do I hear, do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Everybody vote, second? Okay, excellent. I'd like to take a vote. Everybody, very good. Now we're going to go to, uh, seven W that was pulled. I make the motion for us to go ahead and bring up seven W. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Ella.
Yes, I would like to ask Mr. Tijerina Amaro, I think he's in the audience, yes, on this item, uh, which is indicated in the attached as being the most favorable to the district, competitive sealed proposal for student pictures. On this page, exhibit W one, are all of these people, um, allowed to come and take pictures in all our schools? So everyone gets a turn, everyone gets a chance, not the same company over and over.
It's, i- is it discretion of the principal? They've worked with some of these photographers. So some of them feel comfortable with the services that are being provided by some of these photographers. So it's really a discretion of the principal and who they're comfortable with. There have been some, some, uh, maybe changes from, from one vendor to one photographer to another. But that's really the discretion of the principal, who they want to select to take the pictures and provide the best service for their kids.
So they can pick from any of these that are.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tijerina, could you please provide us a list of the, uh, schools and itemize it on which company they use to take their pictures?
Yes, we, yeah, we could, that, that's a request we're going to have to make through them, but we'll get that list for you, sir.
Very good.
Yes.
Yes, and that way we can, uh, get a better understanding on, of what companies are being used. And I understand as, as the discretion of the principal. Um, now, through what fund is this paid for?
I was going to tell you, this is entirely paid by the parents. There's no district fund involved here. There's no district money.
Okay.
The parents have the option, uh, to either take the picture or not. And of course, they pay for it.
I just, um, I, I just, for the sake of equality, uh, it would be great that every school, um, used, uh, I, I mean, got pictures of their kids.
Oh, yeah.
Unfortunately, the reality is that some of these schools cannot afford those pictures. And that's why I want to see, um, that list. I just want to see, uh, what schools are actually using these companies. And that way, um, just for us to take a look at.
Sure.
Uh, so we can get a better understanding.
I understand.
All right.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Is there any other question? No? All those in favor?
Does anybody have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Salinas, go ahead.
Well, maybe, uh, a lot of people have been driven out of the county or the main that we can have companies donate a third of our pictures for your kids to kind of afford them. I know that we, uh, when they take the graduating company, they're supposed to give twenty percent free capital down to kids that can afford capital down. So maybe this company, whoever is chosen, that could be a caveat on their, their selection process that they will donate a third percentage of free pictures to the kids who can afford them. And that would be based on whoever the counselor or the people, the people or the principals choose, that either the senior family they have a pool, that way they can have that picture as a donation from that person. It's just an idea.
Well, that's.
No, it's a good one.
That's an excellent suggestion. That's an excellent suggestion. I wouldn't know exactly how to go about that because the communication is directly with the principals. But, uh, maybe if you can get that information, that's something that we can go ahead.
And, and, and they do, these photographers that have had relationships with these principals, they do help the, the lower-income kids. They provide a small package, uh, to provide for, for the family. And, and I've heard that directly from some of these photographers.
Okay. I just want to make sure that every child, um, at least gets an opportunity to see what we can do to go ahead and make sure that that is done.
Yes, sir, we'll work with that list that you, that you're asking for, and then we'll communicate that with the principals.
Very good.
Okay.
And I apologize, any other suggestions or questions, comments? Very good. Okay. I guess all those four, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Very well, thank you very much. Now we will go to number eight, action agenda. Eight A, approval of the twenty twenty twenty-one budget amendment for general funds and construction funds.
So move.
Second.
Open for discussion, any questions or comments? I would like to go ahead and just for the public to know, if we can get an explanation of what this amendment is for, specifically the amount and the intent of this, of these funds.
Okay. And if I don't give you all the information, I'll ask Dr. Morrison to follow me. We received the thirty-five million dollars, uh, from the maintenance tax note. Came in, we budgeted the note to exhibit eight thirteen. If you look at eight, at budget, at, uh, exhibit eight thirteen, we're putting all the money in the bank for Fund one ninety-nine.
Okay.
Okay, and just to further continue, we also received, uh, had been utilizing some of the money to, if you recall, in previous projects, construction projects, we borrowed. to, if you recall, in previous projects, construction projects, we borrowed from that 35 million, a million dollar to put into the fund for the building projects, which is in exhibit A-15. If you look at A-15, you will see that we took $1 million and we placed it on the general account for building fund.
Yes, sir.
To pay back the district the million dollars that we had loaned to the construction of the building, the other buildings. And of course, the 35 million, the, the money is all for the technology, current technology building that is being remodeled, refurbished in three different sites. South Middle School, Barrientas Middle School, and the Calder Building.
Very good, and the breakdowns on those three projects, just so the public will know, as far as the total that's gonna be spent in each project?
Dr. Morrison, do you have with you?
Robert is, Robert is here, he can probably tell you off the top of his head better than me. I know it's eight, eight and...
We, I know we gave him the last board, one of the previous board meetings, but Robert has him right now for you to...
Well, if, I'm sorry, if you look at exhibits A-17 and A-18, my apologies, for the CTE Center, the large one, the, the major renovation, it's 17.7 million. For Barrientas Middle School, it's 9.595 million. And for South Middle School, it's 6.671. And these are the CTE facility sites that are housed at Barrientas and South.
Excellent, these are very much needed facilities to go ahead and facilitate and empower our children to go out and get all kinds of different certificates and, 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 you know, me personally, my son is a welder, and he's at SpaceX. And it's just one of those things where it's amazing what a welding certificate can do for an individual and make $65 an hour, pretty envious sometimes of him. But it's, it's, it's a lot of hard work, but we need to go ahead and do that. And I just wanna commend our CTE department for doing a great job and continue doing that. And there's all different kinds of fields that we can go into. And with these three buildings, we'll be able to go ahead and facilitate even more and empower these young people, not only with one, but maybe two or three different certificates that can complement each other. I would love to see something also in the very near future, having to do with these CTE buildings, is a program and showing these children on how to own their own business. Cause a lot of these young people will not only go out there and learn the trade, but they'll be able to be and have the opportunity to be owners of their own company. So we need to make sure that we empower them with that knowledge on how to start a company, how to go ahead and do the accounting and set up the loans and do all these things, and, and make it more robust, so we can go ahead and not just give them a trader certificate, but empower them to start their own businesses and companies. In America, we have the great opportunity to be entrepreneurs and go out there and do your own stuff. So I'm excited about this, this is something that is very dear to my heart, and I just look forward in the completion of these buildings and just empowering our children, not only with a good education, but with a trait, that they can go out and not only work, but start their own businesses and companies. So I just commend the district in doing this, and I re, and, and I just appreciate everybody in working toward and using this money wisely to come up with some good facilities to empower our children. So I just wanna give a hand to all of you, thank you very much for everything you guys do, and I greatly appreciate it. And it'll be a direct blessing to so many people. And I commend you all for a wonderful job in making this a priority for us to go and go forward, thank you very much. I'm long-winded, is there anything else, anybody has any other questions, comments? Dr. Morrison, is there anything else you'd like to add? Excellent. You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, item eight A, all those, my God, help me out, Kenneth.
Motion to approve.
Motion, motion to approve, I apologize, all those, yes, everybody approved, motion's approved? Excellent, all right, thank you very much. Action item eight B, approval of the reporting requirements for Harwell Middle School.
So move, second.
Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate Mr. Oteo on an excellent presentation, and also all the principals on their presentation and action plan, good job.
Excellent, any other comments? Make a motion to approve, all those in favor, raise your hand, all those opposed, thank you very much. Item eight C, approval extended to contract with communities and the school of Hidalgo County Inc., CIS for District Wide Drop Out Prevention Services for 2020-21 school year.
So move.
Second.
If there's no, if there's no... Yes, sir?
Is there any data about successful they did in that program?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Is there any data to show how successful they've been in that program?
Who can present?
Okay, let me just ask Irma Villarreal, who is the Director for Federal Programs. This, this program is funded through the, through the State Compensatory Education Fund.
Yes, sir, it is, and it is in partnership and, and approved with the Texas Education Agency. And they have access, we give them access to Skyward and all the information on our students because they have to report the data on attendance and grades and show that they're making a positive impact. And all of this is reported yearly to the Texas Education Agency, and we get a printout of this information as well, every year. And it's in the, it's, you know, the, the improvements are very drastic, and they're in the high 90th percentile in improvements in attendance.
My question is...
I'm sorry?
Is there data, my question was, what's the data that shows that they're being successful in preventing the drop out of these kids and ensuring that they're graduating, these kids?
I'm sorry, I, I'm not sure of your question. In other words, the follow, the follow-up with these kids as they're being served?
No, I think he asked for the students, what percentage, how is it assistant students continue their education, not dropping out and graduating?
Okay, because one of the things that they, they do, sir, is the kids that they serve fall under the 14 indicators for at-risk. Okay, so there's a certain population, but the parents, the teachers, and the staff can nominate these students. And what we're trying to do is, is to place a licensed social worker at each of our elementaries. Because of what we're encountering now, and with dealing with the pandemic, we feel that our counselors have a full schedule, so this person, this licensed social worker will be working with our counselors to ensure that we're meeting the social, emotional, and psychological needs of the students. They follow, the students are followed as they're being served, they're followed year to year to ensure that they are graduating. So I know that the data does reflect how many of these students were served and, and their success in the following years to come.
Do you have contact logs?
Yes, we do.
Social workers are, are making...
It's, it's very detailed, the information that TA gathers from, from these people that run the program. And each, each district has a manager that oversees the staff that's assigned to our nine campuses. And at any given time, we can ask for information, and they're ready and willing to give it to us.
But it's a very good point, and let me ask, let me tell you, last year, we only had four element, six elementaries that had these counselors. And we had them at four of the middle schools. This year, being that we're going to uncertain times and the, the crisis, we, we thought and we know that students need help at school.
Yes, sir.
We are bringing in one social worker for every elementary campus, one social worker for every middle school. And I'm sorry, where are we at?
Right, right now, we have social workers at each of our middle and high schools.
Okay.
But our elementaries are, the social workers are serving eight campuses.
So we're bringing in 25...
Yes, sir.
...social workers to assist with elementary students, the schools that do not have any assistance at all for...
And we're only paying half the price, TA is paying the other half. And they have approved this to, to take place.
Okay, and you mentioned, Mr. Garza, that each school will be having a counselor?
That's our goal, yes, ma'am.
On all grade levels?
At the elementary, yes, ma'am.
Elementary, junior high.
One, they have their counselor, and, and now they're gonna have the social worker also.
The social worker, correct, okay, thank you.
I, I also had a question.
Yes, sir.
I saw that the, that the board approved on six, nine of this year, $270,000. The estimated award is 880, so are we approving an additional 880 to the 270?
This is an additional to get the social workers at each of our elementaries, yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
And, and we're not gonna place them all this year, but as we're placing them, we're, we're paying, we're gonna pay accordingly.
So how, how, how long is this money, could it last till, till 2022, or?
It'll, it'll go, it'll start 2021, and it'll go on to, to the end of the year, I'm, I'm thinking.
Okay.
Okay, it'll end in August. And right now, they have, they only have like two or three that will be ready to start working with us in January. Plus the seven out of the nine that we have presently, seven are going to get certified as well. So we don't have any certified social workers right now out of our nine, but seven are working towards getting it in December, they should have it. So in January, we're looking at having 11 or 12 licensed social workers working with our elementaries.
Will it get in a discount if those people are not certified?
Uh, we do, because certified license, we're, we're having to pay more. And that's why we had to ask TA if they, they would pay the other half, and, and they immediately said yes. So we're not paying as much for the unlicensed, we're paying less.
I have a question. So when are we going to have this 25 year we're talking about?
As fast as, as community and schools can bring them to us. They're the ones that, that do the, the paperwork and the interviewing, and, and they're the ones that hire for us.
They employ and they pay the benefits for this...
They employ, yes, sir. We pay the community and schools project, and they, they take care of the rest.
So, so in the past, the, the social work that had been provided by community and schools, cause this, this person has been...
Last year, we had three out of four licensed, but each year, they rotate them or they change. We're never assured the same person.
Right, the history of, of this program is that they provide non-licensed social workers.
They just don't find them, Mrs. Gonzalez, they're not there.
For whatever reason.
Yes, for whatever reason.
They don't provide licensed social workers like the ones that we have in the district, they are correct?
That's correct.
So this...
But they're all, they're all degreed, and they're all highly trained, because they do an incredible job, they really do. But they're not licensed.
I, I agree with the, with that, but what we need to know is that the non-licensed social workers, not like the licensed workers, licensed social workers that we have in our schools. This is like a supplement, and they work hand in hand with our social workers. So it's, it's an excellent program for the price that we get them for.
Yes, I, I agree with you.
So there's no stipulation on TA paying half of it for them to have it to be licensed?
Uh, well, they knew that the price was gonna go up, so we had to get it approved.
Okay.
Because it was gonna cost TA more, and within that same date, the Texas Education Agency approved for us to get what we needed.
Excellent, excellent.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, well, we could use all the help we can on these challenging times. So we just need to make sure that we use these in such a way that we get the most return in effect on that.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Is, is Dr. Kennedy still the person in charge?
Uh, David Kennedy, Gus, yes, yes, ma'am, he's the one I work with.
I remember the first three.
Well, he used to say I didn't, I wouldn't answer my phone until I tell him, wait a minute, I always answer my phone. So I said, here's my cell, so we get along real well.
Any other questions?
As a matter of fact, he's related that McCollum wants to do the same thing as we're doing.
Well, we're 15 years ahead of McCollum.
Yeah.
Mr. Avira Salinas, any other questions? Okay, well, all those in favor, raise your right hand, all those opposed, very good, thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome Louis Alamea, who are board members.
Now we go to eight D, approval of purchase of additional Cisco Firewall hardware, threat defense software, identity service engine, integration services, and services for enhanced bandwidth management.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Excellent, open for discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand, all those opposed, motion passes, thank you very much. Eight E, approval of renewal license for the Cisco Security Suite for district-wide network protection and intrusion prevention.
Move for approval?
Second.
Open for discussion? Yes, Ms. Gonzalez.
I know that almost every time with me, there's a renewal, a contract, another program. Maybe when you finish doing all the purchases, maybe you can give us a summary of what we really have in place, because we seem to be approving them in isolation and in, in small pieces. I, I would like at one point to see the total of protection and the total renewals and the total new ones, so that when we see them again, we know that it's a renewal or it's a new one. Cause every time you have four or five, and I'm sure you need them, I have no, I have no doubt that you need them. But maybe give us a better picture, so that we can have a better understanding of the quality of technology and services that we do provide. And would you please, maybe, we don't see the total picture of the, where we're going to do them.
That's a, that's a great recommendation, thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please raise your right hand, all those opposed, motion passes. Eight F, approval of the NearPod online learning engagement software license renewal.
So move.
Second.
Open for discussion? If no discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand, all those opposed, motion passes. Eight G, approval of EduFuria, if that's the way you say it, suite data access software license renewal.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Open for discussion? If no discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand, all those opposed, motion passes. Eight H, approval of the, of the GoDirect 17-104 computer desktop for BIM, business information management labs for Memorial Middle School, Barrientas Middle School, Harwell Middle School, and Longoria Middle School.
So move.
Second.
Open for discussion?
Yes, if I may, for President. Mr. Moreno, was there any, or do you have a inventory of other devices of computer desktop that either of these schools already have, or do they not have any, and that's why we're buying new ones, or?
These are actually being purchased by our career and technical education department. They have all of their computers on a refresh cycle. They have all of their computers on a refresh cycle. I will turn this over to Ms. Arminia Lozano, she manages the inventory for her program.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, he is correct. These funds come from a grant, and I have about a hundred thousand in there, and so they are refreshed on a cycle. And so for this current year, it is these four middle schools, and then the following year, it'll be the other, the next three middle schools and one high school. So we have a total of about thirty-four BIM labs, and we recycle using the grant funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Eight I approval of purchase cooperative quotes for South Middle School tennis court improvements.
Move for approval, but I do have a question.
Okay. Second, open for discussion, Ms. Gonzalez?
Where is Southwest Middle School?
South Middle School.
Well, it's the...
Well, I said it, I apologize. I renamed the school to Southwest. I apologize, Ms. Gonzalez.
No, no.
No, you read it.
You read it.
Did I read correctly?
Yes.
So if you look at exhibit I one, it references the job to be at Southwest Middle School.
Well, we'll have to go ahead and make a change on that for clarification purposes. Now, as far as these tennis courts are concerned, what exactly are they gonna be doing for the sixty-five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars?
Resurface the whole court. We're going with a low bid.
Very good, and what is the total on the, how many courses are we looking at?
South Middle School.
Yes, but is there eight there, or how many is there?
Robert, do you know how many?
There are eight tennis courts, very.
Eight tennis courts, okay, excellent. Just wanted to get an idea of what we're looking at as far as, and also to let the public know that it's not just two or three, but it is a wide area to cover. Are they just doing the tennis courts, or doing the surrounding areas with the tennis courts, or what exactly are they doing?
Yes, good evening, everyone. What they'll be doing is they'll be, of course, fixing it all up, cleaning it all up. They'll fill in all the grooves, all the cracks, and then clear it all new surface and all eight courts at South Middle School.
Excellent.
And then they'll also put new inserts, new nets, and new backboards.
Very good, very good. So we're talking total renovation of the tennis courts? As far as the surface and the nets and everything else? Very good.
I have a question, okay, Mr. President?
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. something else.
Does that include replacing the backboards at tennis courts too?
Yes, it includes the backboards.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Eight J approval of contract sum for Baden-entis School Fine Arts Building. Brewster, now I'm changing the names, I apologize. Approval of the contract sum for Brewster South Fine Arts Building, and the cost is one billion five hundred and sixty thousand. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
Open for discussion?
Can I just remind the administration to be sure that the contract has no change orders?
Go ahead.
We have been reminded several times by, as a matter of fact, last week, we barely came to an agreement with Skoggins. If you remember, the last board meeting, you approved for us to go and negotiate with him, because they were above budget. So we brought him down to under budget. It took quite a bit of work, but we were able to get the project done under budget, under budget by about fifteen thousand dollars. So, yes, that was mentioned too. I know Robert has been, and I think, did we have one of them listening in right now, Robert? One of the...
I'd just like to say that, yes, we worked with the architect, David Negrete, and we worked pretty hard on trying to bring down the costs, and we looked at a lot of items. You can see the spreadsheet, detached spreadsheet, where all the items that we looked at. We go through them, we look to see which the architect is comfortable with, which the engineers are comfortable with, and one that, of course, that we're not losing quality. So these are items that we were all comfortable with and feel comfortable with the contractor as well. This contractor in the nineties, in the eighties, did a lot of work with Edinburgh CID, and we're glad to see him put a bid in for our district as well.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Robert, make sure that they do the job, because they didn't do it in Hargill. You know that. It took forever there, and we had a lot of problems in Hargill.
Oh.
Let's make sure we get it done. Who's gonna be watching over this project?
Myself, and then the David Negrete, and also Esteban Zamora from the Architect's Office.
Okay, well, you need to be watching, because I'm not, we're not gonna, I don't wanna have anything like what happened in Hargill happen in this project. I'll be looking after that deal. You understand me?
Well, this is not the same contractor from Hargill.
No, I'm talking about the architect.
Oh, okay, yes.
Okay?
We'll do that.
All right.
Ms. Vela, could you turn on your mic then? Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may, have these architects also, Mr. Salinas, is saying, then...
Well, he was one of the rotation bases, yes, but he was also selected to, for this project. Primarily, he's done the other three projects there at Brewster. We try to keep the same architecture there at Brewster.
And just for clarification purposes, if you can explain to us as a board, the true responsibility of the architect is to go ahead and come up with a set of plans and to make sure that everything that is set for the contractor to build is in those sets of plans. Now, when the contractor goes and builds and finds out there's something missing, who is gonna be held responsible for that change order?
Well, what we do, we look to see if the architect left errors and omission, if he left something majorly based on his construction documents, the documents, then the architect can be held responsible.
So the architects would be held responsible for change orders if it happens to be an oversight that that individual did?
That's correct, yes.
Very good. It's just, I just wanna make sure that we just don't come up with change orders and just grab it from some fund that we have just because of somebody else's mistake. And I think that's what Mr. Salinas is talking about. In those days of the change orders because of an oversight, we cannot do that anymore. We need to make sure that the architect is held liable for, and we pay a pretty good penny for them to do their job. So nowhere else in any other business would you go ahead and say, oops, I made a mistake, and have somebody else pay for it. No, the professionals that we hire will be held accountable to make sure that whatever changes are done, and it's an oversight from somebody that we hired in our contract, it needs to state, and I believe legal does have it there, that if there is anything that is not done correctly, that the district not be held responsible, but the individual that actually did the plans, did the engineering, is held responsible. Because in reality, it's not the contractor's fault. They made a bid according to the specs and the plans that were given to them. So if the architect, I mean, if the contractor went ahead and did a low bid, so be it. That's unfortunate. But we can't hold the school or someone else responsible if an engineer forgets an item on the specs.
And, Mr. Ferris, and that's the protection that the district has? That, yes, there can be change orders, but only if it's something that the user, which is us, recognized that we wanna add or something that we overlooked. But the change orders can only be generated through the administration and not the country.
Yes, and it's...
It's very specific. The statements are very specific.
And that's a very good point, because we, you know, this is not our money, this is our tax dollars, and every penny counts. And especially in these times. So, thank you, I just wanna make sure and echo what Mr. Salinas said.
If, Board President, if I may ask?
I have a question, Mr. Ferris?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I just wanna, I also agree with Vela that we need to have a better rotation of architects, give everybody a chance. Every architect has different artistic creativity, and it's good to have everybody's talents out there shown. You know, we'll have to have a better approach everywhere. Just because this architect is here, here, it doesn't mean he can do both. But that he should be the one picked, since he was picked three times ago, to do the same type of deal. I like creativities, I like to rotate them. I think that we should also the system, put them all in a number, one through twenty, and whoever thinks hits the project. And if a big one they're left, it's a problem, so there's a problem. But I think we have a better rotation of all the architects. Because we have ten good ones here in the valley that can do a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Ms. Garcia?
Yes, Robert, do you go in, and do you monitor the construction sites?
Do we, I'm sorry?
Do you go out and monitor these construction sites?
Yes, we do.
How often do you go?
We, well, me personally, I go probably once or twice a week, but I also have my assistant, Mr. Laliopelis. He goes once or twice a week, and then I also have Mr. Gomez as well. He goes almost every day to every project and brings back pictures and brings up reports. So we meet every day on all the projects. Of course, we also have bi-weekly meetings on all the projects with all the contractors and the architects and engineers as the project is going in progress.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. I don't remember nine, closed session, I need a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Second, all those in favor? We are in closed session. Time is seven forty-four.
Testing, testing, one, two, test, test, test.
Testing, testing, one, two, test, test, test.
Let's go through Mr. Alamea.
Yes.
I was gonna say, your mic, but that's fine. Eddie, are we ready?
Yes, sir. We are streaming, Delia, we're streaming.
Got it.
I make a motion to come back from closed session. The time is ten forty PM. We'll go ahead and start with, I believe it's D, C, Personnel Matters?
Mr. President?
Yes?
We have to declare no action was taken in executive session.
I apologize. Thank you very much, Ms. Gonzalez. No action was taken in the back in executive session.
Mr. President, just real quick, I'll make the motion that we enter into regular session?
Thank you very much. Now, for Personnel Matters?
All those in favor?
Oh, I apologize, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Oscar. Thank you, Carmen, I appreciate it. Now, for Personnel Matters, Mr. Garza?
Yes, sir. For the employment financial advisor at Edinburgh North High School, recommendation is Lori A. Luna Alvarado.
Second.
Excellent. All those? All those opposed? Thank you very much. Motion passed. Second?
For migrant counselor at Edinburgh North High School, administration's recommendation is Sergio Martinez Jr.
Move for approval? Second.
Excellent. All those, your motion passed. Very good.
For payroll information specialist programmer, payroll department, recommendation is Arturo Salinas.
Move for approval? Second.
Excellent. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Senior systems and software development engineer, Technology Department, recommendation is Jesus Rodriguez.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes.
I also recommend the employment of the professional applicants discussed in closed session, subject to assignment for the type and term of contract as identified for each position. And furthermore, I recommend the employment, reassignments, resignations, and retirements as discussed in closed session.
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Does that conclude?
Yes, sir.
Excellent, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'm sorry. Number six, consideration of possible action regarding proposal termination at will employees. Thank you.
Move for approval?
Second.
Excellent. Any questions on that? No discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion passes. Now, we can adjourn. Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned. It's ten forty-three. Thank you very much. PM.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Good job, thank you. You did well for the conference.
I left my stuff on this. Thank you, ma'am.
Mine's in the, over there.
But it's, you can have this paper. I don't want to, I'll just leave it here. I don't need it. I'm not gonna carry that. It's for Ms. Gonzalez.
I didn't get one.
Those poster board?
Well, it's because I got a huge one, because I beat everybody with the number two. I think that. That's in my name thing. You have to.
Vámonos, Ms. Gonzalez.
Hey, Mike, we're gonna be in the back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Morrison. I appreciate that. Oh, yes, of course. You need to go ahead and address the insurance.
So I wanted to have the board workshop on fourth. Remember the board? Tom presented, and he said, one, two, three, you know, the top three. This year, we presented the top three to TA. We all directed us to go and have demonstration, we did completely TDA, we evaluated, which they did. Other information, we evaluated, we ranked, we scored, we did all that. We went through two, two levels, did all three, ranked, so we did the top two, and then redemonstrate, you know, a re-demonstration of more, and we won that, we have the top two. But the individual protocol...